Might have been Jerry.
That must have been Jerry.
Can tell by participants?
That's their job.
Okay, so we have Lisa, we have Joe.
Technically by. You are but obviously by mortgage. So it's more like. But they're.
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 By. Now. Service is definitely your monthly payment. Which is what the earth is. Like we call them condos, which is what you're. They're they're actually the mortgage. And they can be quite high. But you get a lot of amenities with it. Generally speaking, you'd be a. You could get a pool, they certainly get an exercise room. Cafeteria. So you have a place to eat. That's going where all the grounds are maintained. Usually it's indoor parking. I mean.
Hi Jerry.
You want to spend.
Hi Lisa.
They've got a price?
They've got a price, yup. Gosh, if you go online. What is it called, like Prairie something?
Prairie, yeah, Prairie something, I can't say.
But then. My lady, I think it's Goldman Sachs. Actually, so. I went and saw her, she's in the office right across the. But I went. Looked at her. Didn't know how big one you went by. Before you want to be on, the side you want to be on. Not a bad deal. A little rich for my blood.
Go further.
Uh?
I'll go further.
I can't.
Can everybody hear us? On Zoom?
Someone thumbs up? Hello?
Hello. I got.
You got just just a. It's right now. Just so we. Any luck? Record is. Right there.
Lisa, Mark Stein. Dick Stein. Three, three.
How many we got? Oh.
We have quite a few people on.
Three here.
Yeah, three here.
And the camera includes you too.
Oh, wonderful.
Hi Jim.
Hi Jim.
Hi Mark.
I'm gonna have to go mute again. I got evidently some contractors out front and the dogs are going crazy.
Okay. We'll keep you out of line though Jerry.
I feel your pain Jerry, we had Alliant Energy was on our street this morning with one of those, what do they call it, a ditch witch or something? And so they're running all that equipment and it's like, it makes, you know, high pitched noises and between the equipment and the accompanying chorus emanating from my children.
Yeah, the front door staring outside, right?
Oh, I I I think, I can't even imagine the heart failure that my dogs have caused any number of delivery people like, cause they, cause they innocently approach and then all of a sudden, you know, and these, these dogs are big, right? And they rear up on their hind legs and they're like, hi, only glass is separating us from sharing our affection with you.
Yeah.
Rather hard to agree on a professional type of meeting for me, so I'm like, okay, I'm gonna have to like create them in the garage or something. I'm at work today, so I can be very fresh.
That's good. You look like you're in the file room, so.
I am, these are my, yes, this is my, this is my favorite, this time in my, I'm in my teaching office, so. You'll appreciate, you'll appreciate, y'all appreciate this, here's, here's Mark from many, many years ago, he looks just the same, just like I do.
Yeah, right.
We look just the same.
I'm gonna throw a plug. Jersey Mike's opens on the 24th. And that's Mary's son and he's got a partner and anyway, that's.
Is that the one at Fountains, or do they have several, I saw there were several opening?
Um, yeah, he's, he's at Fountains and then they've also got the franchise for Cedar Falls and Waterloo.
You said they're, you said they're opening on the 24th?
Yes.
Okay.
So free sandwiches that day, we can tell them you said so?
Well, I, I stopped over to help on Saturday and they didn't need me and some people were coming in and it was kind of like a practice run for the, the help and they're handing out sandwiches, so Saturday was a good day.
We missed it.
Yup.
Hi Jerry, I think, I think it's 5:30 by mine, how about you Mark, yours 5:30?
Yep.
Ready, sir?
I think, are we ready? Yup, we're ready.
Okay, we'll call the March meeting of the Iowa planning and zoning commission for Monday, March 22nd, 2021 to order. Uh, first off, we have roll call.
Jim Craig?
Yes.
Kevin Lee?
Here.
Lisa Justin?
Here.
Kenny Jones?
Here.
Jerry Turpney? Mark Robb?
Here.
Mark Powers?
Here. Item two is approval of agenda, Pat, do we have any additions or corrections?
We do not have any additions or corrections to the agenda.
Okay, looking for a motion to approve the agenda? I'll call a move to approve the agenda.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Item three, approval of the February 22nd, 2021 regular meeting minutes? Have a motion to approve?
I'll say it.
Have a motion in a second?
I'd just like to update you a little bit before you pass it.
Okay.
The one item on that agenda was the development at 255 Robbins Road. It's just an update, they are continuing to move forward, but they have had to see the variance. Because they ended up with some dead rock close to the surface there, so. But as far as the project is still going to go forward, so it's looking good. And the council has taken your recommendation and approved the second line too.
Okay. Yeah, it's supposed to start one in first June?
I think so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes.
Motion in a second?
I have the second.
Yup. Is that, is that roll call or just simple motion?
Simple motion.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Item four, business. We're here tonight to consider a resolution for recommendation to city council to approve a ordinance amending the zoning district map as specified in ordinance 165, section 165.17, to rezone the area of Heritage Green as described below. Rezone the following from R3 to R5. That part of Lot 1, Otter's Flat number 64, Lynn County, Iowa, lying south of the following, Heritage Green 10th addition to Iowa and Heritage Green 11th addition to Iowa. Except. Plat A, or parcel A, plat of survey 416 as recorded in book 3445, page 251, Lynn County, Iowa. That part of Lot 8, Otter's Flat number 64, Lynn County, Iowa, lying north of Blair's Ferry Road, except that part described as follows. Beginning at the southwest corner of that part of Lot A, lying north of Blair's Ferry Road, thence, north 396 feet, thence east 550 feet, thence south 7 feet, thence east 370 feet, thence south 389 feet, thence west 920 feet to the point of beginning. Above exception includes all of Pakenham's first addition to Lynn County, Iowa. And except Heritage Green 6th addition to Iowa. And Heritage Green 12th addition to Lynn County. And further except parcel A, plat of survey number 416 as recorded in book 3445, page 251, Lynn County, Iowa.
Very good.
That's a mouthful.
It is, it is. Just as a way of explanation, um, it's because it hasn't been final flat.
Okay.
And so the new final flat will be a much simpler description, I guess.
Okay. Uh, normally for rezonings, uh, for the people in the audience, we ask that if you want to talk to the board, come up and address, give your name and address at the podium here and give us your comments and we would take comments opposed to the rezoning first.
Actually, for.
Okay, we take comments, uh, for the rezoning first.
And I think Joe Mailander, he might be on the line.
Yes, yup, so is I.
So Joe would be the first one.
Okay.
Yes, I appreciate your, your time and consideration. Looking to rezone the R3 area of this, of this remaining portion of the Heritage Green property. Again, I, I do apologize for the long legal description and it will be cleaned up as we final flat. Portion, the, the owner is looking to have some greater flexibility with the zero lot line homes that were used in the 12th addition. They seem to still have a. Be a popular item, so they're looking to add. Not a considerable amount, but five to six of these properties likely backing up to the adjacent zero lot line homes there on Blair's Ferry Crossing. The project is, is scheduled to go into construction this spring. A considerable amount of the existing infrastructure is already in place, so there's sanitary sewer and, and water mains stubbed into this property. It's really just an, an attempt to offer some greater flexibility to the owner as to what type of residential property would go in this development.
Okay. Do we have anybody else on the phone wants to talk? Or on the Zoom meeting, I guess is the way to approach it.
I see anyone else, sir?
Anybody else to discuss the pros of the rezoning? We would go to then the.
Mark.
Yeah.
This is Jim Craig, I live on the corner of Heritage Green and Blair's Ferry Crossing. So, and I think this is more of the same, so I'm not troubled by the extension. The one concern I have is that I have a feeling all the new housing traffic is gonna go right to that Blair's Ferry Crossing Heritage Green Drive intersection where we already have people that don't stop, the stop sign regularly, but, um, but I think it's just more of the same and I've talked to the developers to say, are you contemplating anything different? My understanding is there'll actually be more single family homes there than there will be the zero, zero lot line. But, um, the zero lot lines have been pretty nice in that area, we live in one, um, and I know they're putting another one across the street, so I just thought I'd let you know, I did a little checking and that's what I found out.
That's, that's good information, Jim, thank you. Anybody in the audience would care to talk about this?
Are you thinking pro or just?
So pro?
Uh. Well, we. Anything, we talked, we talked pro a little bit ago. And now we would ask for opposing views?
Sir, we've got a microphone up here. Jim, you want to make sure it's on or?
I don't see their name and address.
My name is Sherry Heizer and, um, I live at 220 Willowood Drive.
220 Willowood?
Mm-hmm. And, um, we did get the letter, um, I understand, you know, the, uh, what, the man that, the gentleman that called in that lives on that corner, my problem is, we live in the area where the homes were a little bit more expensive. And so my problem is whenever we moved in, we're probably the only, my husband and I are probably the, one of the only two that are actually second, second generation owners there. Everybody else that I know in that area hasn't been there since that was developed and I think that was started around 2010. At this time, whenever we bought about a year and a half ago, we were given a picture of the plaque saying, here are the homes that are going to be next to you. And we find out a year and a half later that that no longer is going to be, you know, we have a pond, we have about 12 homes that are on the pond and now they want to put seven more on one end of it, so three of the areas have 12 homes and now seven homes are going to back up on one part of the pond. And, um, we do think that our value of our homes are going to go down because now we've just got a pile of homes that are worth this much, I would think the zero lot lines are all great, but we had not expected them to come down and influence on that part of the property. So we're concerned about our, what our house will be worth now, we, had we known this was gonna happen, we may have fallen west for our house because I don't think it's gonna be as worth as much going forward with those homes going over there. I also have one other thing to say about that, is are they gonna go, they said they have sanitary lines in, are they going to come down Heritage Green and make that a road before they start building over there, if they start building? It kind of works, or is that, are they gonna bring all the construction trucks around on Willowood and bring everything in that way, or is that road going to be finished first?
Um, you can ask Mr. Mailander if he knows the direction of the development, whether it's east to west or west to east.
Okay.
Joe, you got an answer for that?
Yeah, I, I think the developer is looking to build this in two phases, with roughly the north half being phase one and then the south half being phase two. The road is proposed to connect Heritage Green through to Willowood Drive and homes along that road would, would basically be phase one of the development. The, the owner will likely install the sanitary sewer and water mains and storm sewer before the, the road is constructed, but a lot of that grading has already been done there for the road itself, so access to the construction site will likely be through Blair's Ferry Crossing and on Heritage Green into the construction site. I, I don't believe a lot of people will come around on Willowood.
The most would be through Heritage Green Drive.
Correct, it's, it's just the most, it's the most direct access.
Yeah.
Right, so where you're telling me the road would be built first and then the most of the construction would come down that road instead of coming all the way around Willowood. And also I think part of it says, we see on the plaque that's up here, it says there's duplexes and it says that those zero lot lines are backing up onto those and I said from what I can see, it's all duplexes that are backing up on the zero lot line houses that are on the backs of those. And then the ones that are in the cul-de-sac to the, what's it, maybe the north, it says they're backing up on houses like ours and not, you know. And I said, I think they're lowly homes, but it will affect the price of my home, so, and I'm, I'm concerned about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, folks? Comments from the commission member?
Guess we can ask one question, what, what is the actual price of the homes that are going to be built? I mean, you know, the. Sure. Price rate, Joe's house.
Well, you can ask.
I'm asking.
But I'm not sure we have an answer to that, Joe maybe have a little information on that and then I'll talk a little bit about the differences between an R3 and an R5.
Okay.
Joe, do you have a comment on the price of the lots or the homes?
I don't have a, a number for you, but I can tell you it's, the lot sizes are very similar to what's exist, the, um, the development to the north and to the east there. Plan to be similar construction sizes. In fact, there, there are some lots that are in the 11th edition, which is north of this site, which have about a 75 foot frontage and. There's, there's very few homes in this proposed development that have a frontage onto the street that small, I think the majority of them are 80 feet at least. But I, I expect it to be very similar development, the homes along the north boundary of this property are all proposed to be single family, similar to what's, what's, certainly the ones backing up on the pond. It's really the, the intent of the owner to provide some flexibility along that eastern boundary of this, of this property.
Does it have a minimum size?
Yes, there are minimums. The, the code minimums are 6,000 square feet of lot size versus 7,000. And the only other difference is that two family homes allow in addition to the single family dwelling. Those are the, those are the differences, they're pretty minor, it does allow for slightly more dense residential area than, than what the previous R3 was. Um, but we looked at it and from a city perspective, we noted that it has been R5 for the last four additions. And the R3 and the R5 are quite incompatible with each other.
Can you explain the difference?
That is the, the only difference is the lot size and then R5 is, allows two family dwellings and single family dwellings, but R3 is only single family. So that's the only difference. Especially.
How many, I mean, do they know how many, um, the most they're gonna have?
They do not, and we have not made a stipulation and there is no limit in the code for that.
Well, I, I felt exception to that then because he just said there were going to be zero lot lines and single family dwellings, never made any mention about duplexes, there's no two families dwelling.
Well, does that's what a zero lot?
That's what a zero lot is.
So, um.
That's duplex.
And those are all going to be up farther to the. To the east. Farther to the east, up close to the Blair's Ferry Crossing.
That, that's what Joe is stating, that is not in writing.
Got it.
Okay.
And like.
Just to be clear, we don't have that.
I know, but I just had one other thing I forgot.
Sure.
Several of our neighbors are not here, they're still, you know, nowhere in Arizona, so I don't know, they're like, our two neighbors, one next door, the one right across the street, are not able to be here because they don't know that, I don't know that any of this has happened too, so I was a little taken aback about how many people were not here tonight, so.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, no problem.
It's all right.
So there's no step? On how many lot lines, uh, zero lot lines are gonna be and there's no step? Right, homes and single family homes?
There is nothing set on paper.
Okay, got it.
So, I'm looking at the map here. Why wouldn't they use Heritage Green, finish that in to take their big trucks and equipment through there? You go clear around this Willowood?
The first, if I remember what Joe said, the first thing they're going to do is finish the road that actually connects Heritage Green and Willowood. But the heavy construction that takes place, which is the construction of the utilities.
Right.
More than anything else, will take place probably from Heritage Green.
Yeah.
Although it should be noted, the streets are built to handle the construction that will take place.
I get what these folks are saying though.
Yeah, I hear you. It is, it's not always fun to live next to development, but once it gets done.
Yeah.
It'll be a great addition, I think, to the city of Iowa. But.
Other questions by commission members?
Hey Pat, have they, yeah, this is Jim, have they? I don't know what the term is of learning, have they actually platted that spot for lots? Do they have a diagram of lots that they show already or is it just an open area and they'll do that later?
No, this is just an open area, Jim.
We bought, we saw how that was gonna be designed too and I just didn't know if they had them actually drawn in or not.
We have it on your phone.
I know on my phone that D. Sattler sent out to the association about what the pot would look like.
Sure, and I think they did do some sending out to you.
Yes.
And that's, that's a good thing, we didn't, we don't have anything that we can display because all we have is a preliminary. Uh, we do have some preliminary plans that they are getting, stayed very close to from when the building, when the process started years ago, so we have no, uh, we have nothing except for the minimums that we would expect them to follow when they do submit for their final plating. And that's when they'll give us all of the lots.
That would, that would actually be a final flat.
Yeah, yeah, and then we'll have to make sure they comply with all of the minimum size. And then, then the next step is for the construction and that's when we check all of the setbacks. And we have one more of them.
I'm Carol Siller, 2245 Heritage Green Drive. And I'm hearing that R5 is, um, side by side zero lot line, but as I read about R5, I'm reading it could be up to three story apartments. Is that true?
Up to three story apartments.
Which is under R5.
Actually. Actually, three story is allowed in R3 as well, but that's different. So the three story is the maximum height of the building. But you still have to be allowed to have two dwelling units in any one room.
Okay.
So you'll never have three in a row, or four in a row, or four units. That's not allowed in an R5. Just to clarify. Only two. Yeah, we got it. Good question.
Just for everybody's information, this body acts as a recommendation to the city council. The city council still has to, still has the final vote on this. We just make recommendations to the city council. So it will come in front of the city council. Do you know when, Pat?
It is scheduled to go to the city council, the first meeting in April, which will be April 7. Just one additional question I have, just to clarify. You're at 224 Heritage?
2245.
2245 Heritage. You are in an R5 zone.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, sure.
Those were your questions, yes, and, yeah, see.
Yeah, because you never know, there's so many.
Oh, yeah.
Apartments going up or under surveillance, and it's, you never know.
You never know.
So, I want to make sure that.
Well, let, let me clarify that as well. If somebody was built a home and rented, there's nothing in the code that says they can't do that.
Right. Really?
And there's nothing in the code that says the people that rent it have to be related to each other. So whether it's in R5 or in R3, this doesn't address that. Or in R1.
I was more worried about the apartment status, when you have all of the.
Sure.
That's what I.
Yeah.
I was, I was too, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Commission member?
So this is Lisa. It's, when we're on Zoom, we can't see if everybody who's in the chamber has had a chance to speak. If everyone has, I would move to approve the motion.
I believe everybody, everybody's spoken, have they not?
Yeah.
I don't want to cut off discussion. Yeah, I don't want to cut off discussion because we can't see people. But I mean, it's important that residents have a chance to air their concerns. We care a lot about that.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa.
If, if everybody's had a chance, though, I will move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve?
I'll say it.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call?
Kevin Need.
All right.
Terry Trippi. Kenny Jones.
Aye.
Lisa Justin.
Aye.
Mark Robb.
Aye.
Warren Powers.
Aye.
Jim Craig.
Aye.
Motion carried. We have a motion to adjourn? I will second. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, folks.
Send good luck at the restaurant, Jerry.
Yes.
Yeah, so the recommendation.
I didn't hear you.
To recognize the.
You said you didn't hear. I said, tell your son, good luck at the restaurant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.